Student Youth Art Month Exhibition in the Administration Building. And we also want to recognize Donna Reidy. Quail Valley Middle School Mathlete Students competed in the Texas Math and Science Coaches Association State Competition and won first place at the state level in Team Sweep States Competition, Number Sense, Math Competition, second place in Calculator Competition, and third place in Science Competition. Recognized tonight are students Andrew Kai, Jeremy Zhao, and Ryan Anslem. We would also like to honor our math coaches for their dedication in preparing our students for success at the state level, Ms. Abigail Jones and Ms. Leanna Biddle. The Quail Valley Middle School Raider Math Team placed first at the Texas State Math Counts Competition in the Team Division. The Math Counts GT Academy Team includes Ben Wright, Andrew Kai, and Ethan Sahid, and their sponsor Ish Ilnall. And we have some exciting news to follow up on these great accomplishments. Two of our Quail Valley Middle School Academy Raiders, 8th Grader Ben Wright and 6th Grader Andrew Kai, were chosen to compete on a four-member team in the 2016 Raytheon Math Counts National Championship, held May 7th through 10th in Washington DC. This team won first place in team scores, and the team won first place in the United States and set up a Math Counts record for all four students being individually ranked in the top 10. This has never happened before in Math Counts history. Ben won 5th place in the nation, and Andrew earned 8th place, and their coach was our own Mrs. Ishilnall. Please help us again recognize these students. And if you're here tonight to support any of these students and staff being recognized tonight, would you stand? We want to recognize you two. Dr. Dupree, I turn the recognitions back to you.
All right. Well, you know January is School Board Member Appreciation Month, but we have elections in May. And so I thought it's a great time to appreciate our board once again, because I guess about two weeks ago now, our incumbents Dave Rosenthal and Jim Rice were re-elected to the Board of Trustees. So I want to congratulate them publicly and thank them for their service. For Dave, this will be his second full term. He's served four years already, going on for another three. Mr. Rice has served six years and is going on to nine. So thank you, gentlemen, for re-upping and for continuing on our team. Later on, at a third meeting for this evening, they will be sworn in for their next term. But at that same meeting, the board will elect officers for another year. So this is also an evening when we take advantage of the opportunity to recognize the board president. Mrs. James has served for two consecutive years, and I don't think people can really appreciate that. Maybe Mr. Rice can, because he served for two consecutive years just before Mrs. James. And it is a major undertaking. They invest a great deal of time in leading the board, meeting with me to plan meetings and agendas, to strategize, to address major issues, and to just be a face for the board and our district in the community. So on a personal level, I want to thank Grail, because we have spent hours and hours and hours together, some very tense and stressful times, but I have been consistently able to rely on her relationship, her heart for students, and her faithfulness in serving as a board and a leader in this community. So on a personal level, thank you for all you've done to support me as the leader and as a great partner. And also, in the more professional capacity, I think I would say, our meetings run well, our agendas are well-planned and executed, and that's because of your leadership. And certainly, you've done a great job of advocating for this district, speaking for this district. And truly, you can't have an appreciation for the number of hours and just the time it takes to do this job. So Grail, thank you for all you have done as president. Last year, we gave you a gavel. This year, we thought we'd give you something... We did take it away, a little early. But you know, I do think, before I give you this gift, your husband and your daughter and your mother-in-law are actually here. So you make personal sacrifices, but I know they also make sacrifices for you to serve as board president and the amount of time and energy you put. So I want to thank you, David, Catherine, and Mrs. James, for the sacrifices you make to help support Grail, because you have invested in Fort Bend ISD by supporting her efforts. So thank you, Grail. And truly, thank you to all of our trustees for all you do to spend so much time preparing for meetings, for all you do, the events you attend in our community to represent our district. It is a pleasure to work with you, and here we start another year together. I just had my third anniversary, so I don't plan to go anywhere, and I hope you plan to stay the long game with me as well. We've got a lot of good work to do going forward. So Grail, I have a gift for you.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, you can't do this job for two years and not... The green light's on. You can't do this job for two years and not say a few words. So first of all, I want to say thank you to my husband for supporting me, and through four years on the board and two years as president, and what you said, Charles, is exactly right. I couldn't do this job without him, so I appreciate you, sweetheart, and I love you. I might cry, so... And Catherine, of course, has been standing in the wings for many, many meetings, waited on me many, many nights, and successfully just finished her first year of college, so I'm very proud of her. And Carol, thank you for being here and for flying out for this special week and staying a couple of extra days so you could be with us tonight. I also want to say thank you, Charles. I appreciate all the time we've spent together, and you have been able to introduce me over and over and over at all these events, and you don't know how many times I've wanted to stand up and say a few things about you too, because you always introduce us and talk about the board and the way we work together and our team, and I appreciate that. A few times, I've wanted to say some things about you and your leadership of our district, and I recognize that it's a team effort. The things you said about working hard to work together are very true, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate your bold and courageous leadership of our school district. And I appreciate you coming back here after being gone for a while and making it through three years, and I hope there's a long, long history to follow with lots more years of all of us working together for our school district, and I appreciate that. I guess I also want to say especially thank you to all of you, my fellow trustees. I appreciate the privilege that you gave me to serve as your president, and I recognize that as an honor, and I thank you very much for that. And I appreciate the teamwork that we've been able to show as a group, how we've worked together really hard through lots of difficult conversations and discussions in this room, through lots of difficult issues, and we've been able to consistently build consensus and demonstrate teamwork, and I appreciate that. I recognize also the commitment that that takes, doing your homework, preparing for meetings, being here for hours. Sometimes those meetings weren't quite as efficient as Dr. Dupree mentioned, because we were here into the wee hours. And I appreciate you being willing to give that time and to be here and to be supportive of this effort, because I think that we've demonstrated leadership as a group. We've demonstrated leadership to the administrative team, to our community, to our students, and that's really, really important. And I appreciate all of you making the sacrifices necessary, because we have to work together. It's all of us together, and with Charles, we're a great team for Fort Bend ISD. So thank you very much.
meeting here, since we're running behind already. Our next item of business are the audience items. First to speak tonight is... Well, is Lucia Street, former HISD trustee. Mrs. Street, are you ready or not prepared at this moment? You can wait for... We've got some others. We can come back.
Except that our first action, microtreatment, it was not HISD. It was Fort Bend ISD.
I don't know. I'm not sure what we're talking about.
You said she was a trustee in HISD.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I said that. You are not a trustee in HISD. You are a trustee in Fort Bend ISD. I apologize for misspeaking.
Well, it's just important.
It is very important, and I have no idea why I said HISD. I'm not even thinking about Houston tonight.
Nor am I here to bring you groceries, which is what this looks like, but I'm going to explain to you in just a moment. I am Lucia Street, and I'm here representing a chief Fort Bend County, which is a county-wide collaboration of business, education, and community leaders committed to dropout prevention. And I have exciting news to share with you, because people all over this county have come together to support all four school districts by contributing funds to make possible a summer reading program for at-risk first graders in Title I schools. As certainly all of you are aware, children who cannot read by 3rd grade are far more likely to struggle throughout school and even to drop out. And these particular children are the ones who would suffer the most from the summer slump that all children may suffer from to some extent. The children to participate in the program have been selected by reading specialists under the guidance of Kathy Duval in Fort Bend ISD, excuse me, and Catherine Salinas in Lamar CISD. Each child will receive 12 books geared to their own reading level and interests, and the name of that child will be placed in each of the 12 books, so they are to keep them, take them home, and share with family. What I was trying to get to the correct person is this piece of paper that'll give you a little more information, and also includes the list of donors. So when you receive that, please, please take notice of it. You will notice youth groups among them, your own Dulles High School Student Council, civic and religious organizations, individuals, and businesses. Your information says 10 to 12 books, but it's actually 12, because the publishers were so pleased with the project that they gave us additional discounts and waived shipping fees. So each child will have it. That means that close to 9,000 books will be in the hands of children, allowing independent reading opportunities this summer. We all share our county's children's goal to graduate from high school and to have a brighter and more meaningful life.
Thank you, Mrs. Street.
I didn't get a chance to say thank you. We know you're concerned about that every day.
So if you have something you'd like to share with us, if you'll give it to Officer Antiveras or Mrs. Kaiser has it. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here tonight. Our next speaker is January Leo. If the green light is on. You'll have three minutes, and Mrs. Tosan will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining in your time.
Thank you. My name is January Leo, and first, I would like to thank our trustees and Superintendent Dupree for your service to Fort Bend students, families, teachers, and staff. The time and effort that you volunteer to ensure the safety and continued growth and education of our future is greatly appreciated. And I'm glad I was here tonight, so I got to hear all the nice praise. Y'all don't hear that enough, so thank you. Today, I'd like to talk to you about strengthening Fort Bend ISD's nondiscrimination policy to include gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. My two children, one in 6th grade and one in 8th, have spent their entire primary and secondary school education in Fort Bend schools. We have always valued diversity and inclusion, the inclusion that Fort Bend provides, and upon entering kindergarten, I was pleased to discover that all Fort Bend ISD schools actively participate in the Anti-Discrimination League's No Place for Hate Program. Tolerance, acceptance, and advocating for others are three attributes and actions that we highly value in our family, and it makes it much easier to have these conversations when the place they are spending a great deal of their time, which is school, is in alignment. I understand that Fort Bend ISD includes sexual orientation and gender identity in their policy on bullying, and that's awesome. It's fantastic. It's comforting to know that if my children were ever bullied or harassed by their peers or, God forbid, their teachers, there are avenues available to address the problem. But discrimination is different from bullying and can be much more subtle and often unintentional. According to the 2013 School Climate Survey conducted by the Gay Lesbian Straight Education Network, or GLSEN, 15% of students interviewed were disciplined for wearing clothing or items supporting LGBT issues. 18% were told they could not bring a same-sex date to a dance. 42% of transgender students were prevented from using their preferred name or pronoun while at school. 31% were prevented from wearing clothing that was considered inappropriate based on their legal sex. This goes beyond the boundaries of name-calling. LGBT kids face unique challenges in schools. The same GLSEN survey I previously mentioned found that over half of LGBT kids felt unsafe in their public schools. The last few weeks have been rough, as I have watched the discussion over transgender rights, particularly for trans kids, come under the microscope.
30 seconds.
The lies, misunderstanding, and ugliness that are being spread are in complete dissonance with the reality that I know. The LGBT kids I know are smart, funny, kind, talented, good students, respectful, and just want to get through school without being singled out, harassed, or made to feel like who they are is wrong. Fort Bend ISD is already halfway there with a strong anti-bullying policy. Let's follow the lead of Houston, Fort Worth, and other Texas schools who recognize that all children deserve to be valued and respected.
Thank you.
I have copies of this, if y'all would like this. It has my contact information.
Yes, ma'am. If you can give that to Mrs. Kaiser, she'll distribute it to us. She's the lady in the back. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Our next speaker is Nicholas Singleton.
Good evening, Dr. Dupree, Madam President, and the rest of the Fort Bend Board of Trustees. I'm Nicholas Singleton, the current president of the Elkins High School Gay Straight Alliance. Along with being a proud student in the most diverse county in the nation, I'm also openly gay. As such, I have firsthand insight on the discrimination experienced by LGBT students in Fort Bend. In middle school, I would often experience the backlash of being openly gay and would not feel comfortable expressing my concerns to teachers and administrators. In one instance, a student continuously taunted me every day and worked to destroy my relationships with my only confidants. Fort Bend works to cultivate a learning environment in which students are able to freely express their different backgrounds without fear of backlash. However, the lack of attention given to LGBT students has, wait, stopped me from seeking help. In the 2013 School Climate Survey, 55.5% of LGBT students feel unsafe at school because of their sexual orientation, and at that time in my life, I was one of those students. Fast forward to my sophomore year in high school, my first year being president of the Gay Straight Alliance. While excited to be in my position, I proposed that the club make posters to gain more members. However, we were told to not use rainbow coloring. As a symbol of happier times stemming from the hardships of those in the gay rights movement, it was difficult for me to understand the reasoning behind the ban on rainbow coloring, especially when other student organizations did not have the same restrictions on their posters. As a graduating senior, I now look back and wish that Fort Bend's anti-discrimination policy had included sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression during my time here. I know that this policy change will allow more LGBT identifying students to not only freely accept themselves, but to seek out groups that work to support them. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you will take the necessary steps to indiscrimination in Fort Bend schools.
Thank you, Nicholas, for being here tonight. Our next speaker is Sandyarta Kurniawan.
Dr. Dupree and Fort Bend ISD members, thank you very much for the efforts that you've put in to have a good learning environment for our kids here. Thank you very much. I represent a group of homeowners of Riverstone, north of LJ Parkway, which comprises of five subdivisions, namely the Auburn Heights, Ivory Ridge, Amber Creek, Scenic Bend. Most of us moved into this community since 2015, and looking back, we made a really good decision to buy houses in the Fort Bend ISD system. Currently, our children go to Settlers Way Elementary, which we were hoping to be changed to Ann Sullivan Elementary once the new school opens in fall 2016. Some of the Riverstone children currently attending Settlers Way Elementary received a notice a few weeks ago that they will be moving to the new elementary school in the fall of 2016, while our children did not receive any notice about the change of the school. Further, we were not invited to the recent Parent Teachers Association discussions for the new campus. Later, we came to know from Fort Bend ISD that our subdivisions will continue to be zoned to Settlers Way Elementary. This zoning pattern seems to be implemented in 2015, while our new subdivisions were being constructed and residents yet to occupy their homes, and we did not get an opportunity to share our inputs and thoughts with the board. This zoning pattern will separate our children from our neighbors' children with whom they study and play right now. Our children believed that they would move to the new school along with their friends. They're asking us when they would move to Ann Sullivan Elementary with their friends in other Riverstone subdivisions. It is hard for us to believe and provide our children with a convincing reason on the current zoning pattern that will separate them from their friends right now. We were surprised and a little disappointed with the current zoning pattern that separate these new subdivisions of Riverstone community to different schools than the rest of the new Riverstone subdivisions, which has elementary and middle school-going children. As residents of the new Riverstone subdivisions, we feel that this new elementary pack, elementary and middle school zoning, is not a convincing decision for many reasons, and my neighbors...
30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay. And my neighbors will speak on these reasons after me. We are here to request the zoning of our new subdivision to Ann Sullivan Elementary or Commonwealth Elementary, whichever has less utilization and FSMS, which would be a appropriate option for our children and their safety. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Noreen Isla.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to actually support the same petition which my fellow neighbor just mentioned about getting our subdivisions zoned to Ann Sullivan Elementary. And I would just like to highlight one of the policies of FBISD, which supports the petition. FBISD policy strives to reduce distance travel by students and keep children safe at nearby schools. Considering this policy, Ann Sullivan Elementary, Commonwealth Elementary, and Fort Settlement Middle Schools are the closest to our communities and safest compared to Settlers Way Elementary and First Colony Middle School. Sorry, excuse me. Our kids will have to travel through four parkways and four intersections to reach Settlers Way Elementary and First Colony Middle School, while they can take the pathways and underpass walkways within the Riverstone communities for Ann Sullivan Elementary or Commonwealth Elementary School. We feel that the new feeder patterns do not give priority to our children's safety, but rather focuses on school utilization to our children's detriment. In addition to that, I would just like to mention that currently, some of the Riverstone communities, for example Creek Stone Village, which is much farther away, more than three miles from Ann Sullivan Elementary and Fort Settlements Middle School, compared to our newer subdivisions, which is like actually less than two miles to Ann Sullivan, are actually zoned to Settlers Way Elementary and First Colony Middle Schools. These, like for example, the Creek Stone Village, they're located outside Riverstone Community, and they're further away. But our subdivisions, which is like less than like almost like two miles, we are not zoned to Ann Sullivan. So we are just strongly recommending that since we are closer to Ann Sullivan, two miles apart from that, we should be zoned to that school, as compared to Settlers Way, which is like 3.6 miles, and our kids have to actually take bus, which does not provide the safest way, because they actually have to go by bus, rather than like if we are closer to the school, which is near to a house, that would be more convenient and that would be more further safe in terms of saving the cost on transportation as well. And I do have another member of our group who would be actually further talking about that. So our support is in favor of getting our subdivisions zoned to the Ann Sullivan, or in addition to Commonwealth.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for being here tonight. Next speaker is Balaji Saraziram.
Good evening, Dr. Dupree and members of the board. Thank you for the time to present a petition to you. Continuing with the points that my neighbors have already raised, one of the policies of the FBISD is to group kids together so that they advance through the school system together and stay in the same schools. With the current feeder pattern, our new subdivisions, which has... With the current feeder pattern, our new subdivisions, which has kids that mostly go to elementary and middle school, are being zoned to Settlers Way and First Colony Middle School, which is outside the Riverstone community. It also combines our kids with tenants living in apartments, which, as you know, are usually short-term people. They don't live there very long, so the relationships are a couple years at most. And it also combines our kids with other communities in, I mean, other subdivisions in Riverstone, where children going to middle school and elementary school do not live in that area. They're mostly empty nesters and older children. While, while Commonwealth Elementary has enrollment that exceeded capacity in the last few years, the projected enrollment in Commonwealth next year is eighty-nine percent, and we understand this trend of being below capacity is going to continue. For Fort Settlement Middle School, which is fed from Commonwealth, the enrollment was below capacity for the last few years, and we are given to believe this trend is going to continue. Whereas with Settlers Way, it, Settlers Way feeds into the FCMS, which is First Colony Middle School, and we are given to believe that it has exceeded capacity the last few years, and this trend of being overused or overutilized is going to continue. So looking at these two numbers, it makes more sense to zone more kids into a school that's going to feed into First, into Fort Settlement, which is being underutilized right now. We understand that the, in January of 2015, the district-wide feeder pattern and boundary plan was put into place, which highlights that the retreat apartments in Riverstone will be zoned to Settlers Way.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Which will be zoned to Settlers Way, but we are also given to believe that the boundaries will be adjusted coming, going forward. Looking at all these issues and considering that the safety of our kids, which is important to FBISD and to us, keeping our kids within the Riverstone community is going to keep them safe. It's going to allow them to bike to work, I mean, bike to school, not to work, bike to school if they need. We understand that the board has put in a lot of effort into zoning kids into appropriate schools, and we'd appreciate you for it. We want to be partners in trying to keep our kids safe and zone them to right schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for being here tonight. That concludes our audience items for this evening. Next on the agenda is information. And I, Mr. Rice, are you?
Yes. We have an update from Gibson Consulting, and I'll ask our internal auditor, Janay Moname. Here to introduce them and begin this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, and members of the board, and Dr. Dupree. First, I want to thank the audit committee and Mr. Rice for just emphasizing the importance of internal audit and having the function active in Fort Bend ISD. We, as a district, consult with Gibson Consulting and to execute our internal audits for the purpose of performing audits that are independent, objective, and an ongoing review of administration's procedures. Thereby, selecting audits on an annual basis that is based on a risk assessment, the audit committee makes that determination every school year. Tonight, Gibson Consulting is here to present the results of the construction follow-up audit and the human resource audit. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Greg Gibson and Elizabeth King to go over those results.
We are proud to be part of the board's internal audit program for continuous improvement. I'm Greg Gibson, president of Gibson Consulting Group, and we've been involved with this program for three years, and we, tonight, are going to present two audit reports. One is a follow-up report on construction, construction management, and the other one is an initial audit of human resources, as Janay pointed out. Standing behind me is Elizabeth King, I think she's behind me, and she will be doing part of the presentation. And so I think there will be some other introductions I'll make of people that were involved in the project, projects that are not here tonight, and then we'll do the two audits, and then if you would like to ask questions during our presentation, please feel free to do that. We will also have time, as much time as you need, after the presentation for additional So I was a project director. I was also directly involved in the construction follow-up project. Elizabeth is the hu, Lead Human Resources Auditor. Cheyenne Roth, who is not here tonight, is our project manager. She's also the program manager for Gibson's portion of the internal audit program here at Fort Bend. But we had two subcontractors that were also very important parts of this project. Nat King was our expert on construction management, Paul Tate, an expert in human resources management. So let's talk about the construction follow-up management audit first. The initial construction management audit was completed in March 2015. It was a preemptive audit, and this is a different type of audit. Usually, you audit things that happened in the past, and then you kind of say, this is what went right, and this is maybe not what didn't go right. A preemptive audit is different in that you hadn't started the bond program yet, and so the purpose of this audit was really to evaluate your readiness for that program from an internal standpoint. And so this was important because it's almost a half-a-billion-dollar bond program that is underway now, and so this audit was undertaken by, by this board to evaluate the readiness. So the follow-up audit was conducted pretty quickly because the bond program started pretty quickly, and so we started in November and completed in April 2016. So just to refresh your memory, these are the areas that we looked at in the initial construction audit of last year. So I won't go through all these, but it covered a lot of elements of the construction management. And at this time, when we were doing this audit, your bond program manager had not, Jacobs had not been brought on board yet, and so that was in the middle of the RFP process, or the evaluation process, when we started this work. So these are the recommendations that were made in the initial audit. Enhance design and construction procedures manual. Modify construction progress reports. Update Fort Bend ISD design standards. Finalize standard contracts. At the time, we weren't using the AIA standard contracts for construction management and Enforce responsibility for daily site inspections. This was a requirement in your own job descriptions for construction oversight. Those were not being complied with at the time. Develop safety and security standards for construction sites. These were procedures that related specifically to construction on active school sites, where there were students, staff, present at the site, and the procedures that needed to be followed very strictly so that they are safe during the construction process. Other recommendations: modify board policy for reporting project changes supported by contingency funds. We did a really good job on change orders. Contingencies arise before change orders, and so as soon as you know that a contingency is, is out there, that we thought it would be good to modify your board policy so that the board would be informed of these contingents, contingency fund spending in addition to change orders. Change approach for selecting architects and engineers. We didn't think they were mapped to the, the type of architect and engineer, to the actual work that we wanted them to do, and this was, you'll see in a short while that this was changed. Re-engineer invoice processing to maximize use of technologies. Use project management information system on internal projects. So when the, when the program manager, program manager Jacobs came on board, they were involved in a lot of the implementation of these recommendations with oversight from Fort Bend ISD. So when we came and did our follow-up audit, we saw a lot of things that they had developed that had been reviewed by Fort Bend that provided to us, and so when we did our follow-up audit, we also identified some additional recommendations. As I said before, when we were doing the initial audit, Jacobs wasn't here. After we did the follow-up, when we were doing the follow-up audit, they were here, and we didn't see a completed program management plan, which is common in the industry, that just wasn't done yet, and so it has since been done, but that was something that we made a recommendation for in the follow-up audit. We also wanted the district to improve its audit recommendation status reporting. We came in November, and some of the status representations were inconsistent with the actual status, and so we just, we worked with the district to validate the status, but we thought there were some improvements that could be made in recommendation status reporting, and that was also made in our follow-up report. So the good news today, as of, actually as of April, all recommendations are fully implemented for your bond program. The initial field work was in December of 2015. However, the sta, status of several of the recommendations were not complete, so the project was extended to allow additional time for completion because it was important that these recommendations get implemented before going too far into the bond program. So we stayed and continued to audit the progress of the construction division until this was completed, and so it was by April, all these things were done and implemented for the bond program. There was one recommendation about the daily site inspections that we, we reached, and my construction expert agreed to an acceptable compromise for daily site inspections. Daily site inspections for every site, for a district this size, and a bond program this size is very expensive. And so the district considered this, and there is a modification that was accepted whereby the district will hire its own inspectors, but they may not be doing daily site inspections at every site. But we felt this was a good compromise that weighed both the benefits of the onsite inspections with the cost of a daily site inspection, and so this work is in place. These positions have been created, and we believe this is a good compromise for the school system. So all recommendations based on that description are considered fully recommended, fully implemented as of April 2016. There are some additional requirements, reporting requirements being considered by the board. The department met all of our reporting requirements for what needed to be in the reports. However, the board is still considering additional bond program summary reporting for their, for your purposes, and so that is, is still in process. Before I go to the human resources audit, are there any questions about this particular construction follow-up audit?
Do you have any questions on the construction follow-up audit? Comments? Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep going. First of all, I wanted to thank Kermit Spears, the chief human resources officer and his staff, for participating and providing a lot of information, being available for interviews, and when auditors are around, it disrupts the work, and we realize that, and so we try to be as least disruptive as possible. But his, his staff was very, like, worked with us and got us the information we needed, and I just wanted to tell Kermit, thank you for participating in this audit. I also wanted to thank Janay. She was also instrumental in getting things scheduled, getting our data. All the information from the district comes through Janay and comes to us, and it really saves us a lot of time on our audits, and it is greatly appreciated. So human resources is a, not a huge department. It's sixty-four full-time equivalent staff, four-million-dollar operation compared to the size of your district budget. It's not a big department, however, staff resources represents eighty percent of your operating budget. So human resources is a big deal, and so it goes out and finds the people, teachers and other staff you need to bring into the district. It trains them, it orients them, and it supports them throughout their, their careers. And so this is just a, a really important area for Fort Bend ISD. It was, it was acknowledged in the initial risk assessment that we did three years ago, and it just, now was its turn, and so the results tonight are the results of our audit that started last fall and ended a few months ago. So these are the areas addressed by the human resources audit. Overall organization and management, compliance with laws and regulation, recruiting and onboarding activities, employee discipline and evaluation, benefits management, position management, information technology and the use of that technology, and the compensation structure. So the audit, this was the scope of the areas that were involved. Actual work involved massive amounts of data collection and analysis, interviews. We did focus groups. We also did transaction testing, which is one of the things that differentiates an audit from like a consulting study, is that we actually sample transactions and validate that the actual procedures and policies that the district has are being followed. And Elizabeth will talk a little bit more about the compliance part of that in a minute. So we did ten audit tests as part of this audit, and so our audit tests are defined based on, some are standard and some are based on what we learn, and some of the tests involved what's called data analytics, where we looked at your entire database of transactions in HR and would take samples from that data set. And so you have nine thousand employee records, and so from that, we took a sample and audited individual personnel files to make sure that they were compliant with the requirements. In our audit report, there are several commendations that are mentioned as best practices. The first one was the creation. In fact, I think I was standing here a year ago or so when Mr. Spears was giving you an update on the people's strategy and five-year plan. This is a really good plan. It's very strategic, it has a lot of good elements, and some changes, positive changes is already resulting from this plan, and so we wanted to acknowledge that effort. Also, there's a new hire and employee orientation workflow process. This has shown some really significant improvement. On page twenty-nine of the report, you will see a graph that shows that in, in June 2014, the day, the number of days between recommendation and offer was seventy days, and in September 2015, it was four days. That's a pretty significant improvement in process efficiency, and so this was an initiative identified in the five-year plan, and this was a very significant process, reengineering with significant benefits. Next is the district-sponsored alternative certification program and partnership with a local organization here to achieve that alternative certification program. This is just a great way to identify additional resources that can help the district. Lastly, is the collaboration between the HR department and your community relations department to attract and retain employees, including an employee assistance program. Apparently, we had an employee assistance program years ago. It stopped, and now we've reinstated it. Also, one of the examples of the collaboration between the HR and community relations departments is a teacher recruitment video, and so this is great that you engaged, I think a lot of districts would have just gone outside and found someone outside to do it. You worked with your own talent that you had here in the school district to have two departments that normally may not work together in many school districts work together to develop this teacher recruitment video. So this was just one example of the benefits of this type of collaboration. So now I'm going to get into some of the audit recommendations, and Elizabeth is going to help me present some of these. One of the recommendations, and let me just tell you that not all the, there's twenty-three, twenty, twenty-three recommendations in the report. We're not talking about all of them tonight. We picked what we've believed were the most important ones to talk about, and so you'll see the recommendation, and we've kind of paraphrased the recommendation for space on the slide, then following in parentheses is the recommend, recommendation number in the, in the report, and then there's a priority And then, there's a priority assignment for the recommendation. And the board audit committee asked us our opinion on the priority assignment for each of these recommendations. So, the first is the adding more specificity to the HR strategic plan. So, the plan is a very good visionary document, that kind of the next step of what anyone would expect to see are the actual action plans and the establishment of priorities and the establishment of accountability or assignment of individual projects that have a begin date and a completion date and an estimate of level of effort. And so, this wasn't complete yet, and so, we made a recommendation for the department to not leave strategy, but focus more on the project management side of it, or focus equally on the project management part of it, so that when we're all done, we can prove to ourselves through these project plans that we achieved the objectives of the strategic plan. The next recommendation, and you'll notice that these are organized into different groups. This is the planning and accountability. And then, we've got three or four other sections, but we grouped these together. The next recommendation is the implement of performance measures. So, this has been a common recommendation in our audits in other departments. And so, there are some measures now. We think there are additional measures that the board may not require, but we think at the lower level would benefit the, the school district and the department. And on page 20, we provide a list of some of the examples of both qualitative and quantitative measures that can be used to track performance and can also be used to set performance targets in out years. The next area of audit recommendations is process efficiency. And there are two recommendations here I'd like to talk about. Recommendation 19 is to research ways to automate applicant tracking and performance evaluation system and integrate them with your human, your Oracle PeopleSoft human resource system. So, right now, you have a applicant tracking system, but it's not integrated with your HR system. Your teacher evaluation system and your other evaluation systems are not automated. And so, those need to be automated and also integrated with your HR system. And so, this would help, anytime you can integrate systems, one, you want to automate because it's more efficient, and second, you'd like to have integrated systems because then you don't have to have manual interfaces of entering into multiple systems. So, this is a, a recommendation to achieve that. The next recommendation is to develop a plan to remove the reliance on paper documents. We have manual hard copy personnel files. And so, this, for a district this size, we really should be automated and have all these in online electronic format. And so, there's a separate recommendation about some control issues with your file storage. But this recommendation really relates to the streamlining and the getting the data management to be electronic as opposed to hard copy. So, I'm going to let Elizabeth step forward and walk you through some of the compliance and internal control recommendations.
Thank you, Greg. My name's Elizabeth King. I was the lead auditor for the human resources audit. So, as Greg said, I'm going to be walking through, there's a total of five recommendations relating to compliance and internal controls. The first of those is recommendation 20, and this is to, I apologize. First of those is recommendation six, to secure immediately and protect the confidentiality of personnel files. So, like Greg was mentioning, in addition to using electronic data management for all your personnel files, it's important that, in the meantime, any hard copy personnel files are kept confidential and are secure. So, there's, there's actually a board policy GBA legal that references the confidentiality of personnel files. It's important that these files be maintained in a room that is locked and water-protected and fireproof rated to ensure the confidentiality of all personnel records. The next recommendation is number 15, to establish procedures to ensure timely vacancy reporting to HR. Identifying and filling vacancies is directly dependent on the timely reporting by principals. So, it's important that HR establish procedures to ensure that principals are reporting that information in a timely manner so that those vacancies can be identified and quickly filled. The next recommendation is number 20, to ciberate payroll and HR payroll processing activities. So, this was actually identified in the payroll audit, and it was, again, recommended in human resources. It's important that payroll, because it's an accounting function, it's important that it be reporting to the CFO. So, all pay calculation and entry into the system should be maintained within the payroll department and not be under human resources. The next recommendation, next two recommendations actually have to deal with reporting retired employees to TRS. These both pertain to test five. That's on page 68 of the report. Recommendation seven is to implement tracking procedures for the hours worked by retired employees. Currently, retired employees, the hours that are reported to TRS are calculated, there's an average taken by, based off of their gross pay and their hourly pay rate. Due to this, the hours that are being reported are not accurate, and they're not precisely representing the hours actually worked. Without these accurate time records, TRS is unable to identify those employees that should be, that should not be receiving their annuity payments, those that worked beyond the number of hours allowed while still receiving payments. This just puts the district at a risk of possibly having to reimburse TRS for these The last recommendation pertaining to compliance of, and internal controls is number eight, to review system records to ensure retired employees are properly classified. So, like I said, this is similar to the previous recommendation. We noticed in our testing that there were certain retired employees that weren't properly classified as such in the system, and due to that, they weren't properly reported to TRS. And it's important that all employees are properly classified so that all the reporting to TRS is correct and accurate. So, that concludes the recommendations for compliance and internal controls. I will pass it back to Greg now. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to point out, while the TRS, there are some compliance risks and potential liability, the liability is not significant. And so, it's not, we're not going to have to pay TRS any sizable amount. So, it's more of a process issue with the TRS. We just want to make sure that, again, we're speaking about retirees. And so, that instead of estimating time, we want to do actual time, just so that we're making sure that the TRS has the information it needs to make the decisions that it needs to make. But I just wanted to clarify that point. So, the last recommendation we plan to speak about this evening, although we'll answer questions about any other recommendation we have in our report, is to conduct an employee-dependent eligibility audit of your district medical benefits plan. You haven't done this at least in five years. You made it, I don't know when was the last time you might have done it, but these are just good to do periodically because they will often find ineligible participants in these programs, which you end up having to pay for. And so, this is a good idea to do periodically. You don't need to do one every year. Probably every five years would do it, and then you may find after some time that it's not needed quite as frequently. The estimates, if you look at the industry, they get 8% of dependents that are enrolled in plans are generally ineligible for those, for a variety of reasons. So, assuming that, your annual savings could reach 1.2 million. We're not guaranteeing that. It could be more, it could be less, it could be a lot less. But the, there is a savings potential associated with this recommendation. So, the rest of the, what we've done is list the rest of the recommendations on the next three pages, and it just has the recommendation number and the order that they're in the report, the priority assignment, where red is the high priority, orange is medium priority, and yellow is low priority. And so, all 23 are listed at the end of your presentation. I'm not going to go through those now, but I will stop to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson, and thank you, Ms. King, for that thorough report. Mr. Rosenthal, do you have a question?
Yeah. I would like to see if you had something recently behind in our medical.
Right. So, we have a deficit in our, in our health plan. So, yes, that would probably be something to look at going forward.
Yeah, but it actually, actually would be nice to see the state take care of that retired teacher thing so that they don't get penalized, which is kind of crazy. But we'll see if they can take care of that this time around. So, hopefully, that won't be an issue. But thank you. That was a good report.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. Tassan?
Thank you, Mr. Gibson and Mrs. King. We appreciate you being here today. My question is actually a follow-up for the administration. Mr. Spears, we discussed within the audit committee getting a timeline for implementation of these recommendations, so I wanted to see where we were on getting that and if you knew when you would have something like that for us.
So, fortunately, I was able to learn from my peers that actually went through the audit process on about three or four subsequent processes. So, after our meeting, worked with my team and put together an Excel spreadsheet, outlined each recommendation, and then to the right.
Kind of assigned those recommendations and then put whether or not we started, completed it, or we're not going to recommend to move forward with it. So, I've sent it to a few people to look it over, and it, it should be ready for you to review pretty shortly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right. Do we have any other questions? Mr. Rice?
I don't have a question, but I would like to make a comment for our audience here tonight that, first of all, to thank Mr. Gibson and his firm for providing the consulting services, the audit services for us. Also, to thank Mr. Spears, who's done a very good job of participating in the audit, and Mr. Pena, I mean, Mr. Perez, excuse me, for the construction audit. And I think that Dr. Dupree and his staff would agree that probably Fort Bend ISD has the most robust audit program underway in the state of Texas. And this is done not to try to find things of wrongdoing, but really to look at processes and procedures, many of which have been in place for an extended period of time, over 20 years, to see if they're still relevant, if they're still practical. And if they're not, then we make tweaks and improvements to these programs across the board. Janay Monamayer is our internal auditor, and she is the linchpin in our audit committee. Each year, the board president appoints a group of three persons, and Mrs. James, this year, in addition to serving on the audit committee herself, appointed Mrs. Tasson and myself. And then, the new board president will appoint a new audit committee, and that is why Mrs. Monamayer is here, to provide a common thread of knowledge and experience for the new audit committee as we're going forward. But I think it's safe to say that Fort Bend ISD has a very strong audit program underway in our district. We do have audits that occur on an annual basis. Some audits occur maybe every three to five years. And so, I, I want to thank the staff for their participation in the construction management audit and the human resources audit, and Gibson and Mrs. Monamayer, and my colleagues for doing a very good job in bringing us this information here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I'd just like to comment, and thank you for serving as a chair of the audit committee this year and doing a fine job in our effort to promote continuous improvement in our district, because that's what this, the audit committee is all about, is continuously improving our processes and, and procedures and our practices. So, thank you for that, for that service. Does anybody have any other questions? Mr. Rosenthal?
Actually, it's, it's something that, that came up in the, in the construction audit that, and it's not completely related to this specific audit, but I, I like, I like, you know, your, your recommendations here for the bond program. And I do think that was good that we started that actually before we started spending money. So, I, I'm really happy to see that. But I'm thinking some of these things, I'm hoping that we do these on non-bond projects as well. Because I would think, things like inspections and whatnot, no, not, there weren't, in the case I'm thinking is the Dulles Elementary School, where we had delays and delays and delays in the architectural drawings. But they seem to have kept going on and going on and going on without being stopped and being reported. And so, I think a system like this maybe would, would help us so that those issues don't come up again.
Yes, sir. I think that's a good observation. This audit was not specifically for the bond. It was definitely preemptive, since the bond was a major investment, but it applies to everything that we do related to design and construction.
And I'll just add to that, another thing that isn't quite worked out yet, Dr. Dupree, but I know we're working on it, is the construction reporting and making sure we've got a good board-level report related to those contingency funds and the different projects as they're going on, both bond projects and non-bond projects. So, that's, there's a lot of information out there on the website, but hoping to focus that for board-appropriate information is something we're working on, too.
Well, Mrs. James, I thought you volunteered for daily inspections of our construction sites.
I did not. My schedule's really, really full right now, and so, luckily, we've hired a couple of people to do daily site inspections, so I don't have to do that myself. Do we have any other comments? All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gibson, for being here tonight. Thank you for these very thorough reports and for being a part of our internal audit program. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on in the agenda now to our closed session. The board is ready to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters as authorized by law, including a particular, particular docket number that's listed there. Do I need to read it, Mr. Morris? I do. Two zero one six dash zero three zero zero dash PST dash E. Keep going? Okay. Thank you. Also, we'll be discussing personnel matters. The board is now convened in closed session.